Good morning. Welcome to the Monday, March 24th, 9:00 AM meeting of the Board of County Commissioners in Santa Rosa County. Please take a moment, silence your telephones, make sure they're in vibrate so that we don't interrupt each other. And let's rise for opening prayer. Father, we thank you for the privilege of coming together as free men and women to decide our own governmental affairs. Pray that you'll watch over and protect this body. I pray that the things that are said and done here be pleasing in your sight, in Jesus' name. Amen. And I believe Commissioner Cole, share terms with the pledge.
Join us. We pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start on the right. Commissioner Salter, do you have any additions?
Mr. Chairman, no items other than we continue to move forward and hopefully around August to September, we'll be finished with the Gulf Power Company industrial certification sites.
Outstanding. I attended an excellent conference the other day on that very subject. Commissioner Cole?
No add-ons, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Litchard?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We need to add the acceptance of the assignment of Gulf Power Company lighting for, I believe, the final stage of the US-98 lighting. We accept maintenance of that and then we reimburse that through a separate contract with DOT.
Let's make that item number nine under administrative. Ms. Jones? Mr. Boylock?
All right. We'll move right into the Administrative Committee Report. Item number one is discussion of issuance of a certificate of public conveyance and necessity, or COPCN, of operation of emergency air ambulance transportation services to Air Methods Incorporated, or Air Methods Corporation. Backup is in the book. It's pretty straightforward. We do have one request to speak, so if you'd come forward, please give us your name and address for the record.
Loretta Aiken, 1-828-SUNDOWN-DRIVE-NAVAR. Recently, I attended a meeting in Navarre, and I was approached by somebody who wanted to know what happened to the Lockheed deal. They thought it was interesting that we have a Whiting Field airpark and that we couldn't make the deal happen, and they went to the next county over. And I just, because I'm out of town a lot, I probably missed this, but I'd never heard it said here, and I wondered just if y'all could educate me a little bit about it, like they wanted a large hangar, we couldn't do it on time, is what I heard. Gulf Power wants 1.2 million to run power out there, and how much will the water cost, and is there roads out there? And there was one other question, too, about the industrial park. Has it ever been certified? And I'll sit down and listen.
Absolutely. And I'll field that question, being the only piling on the board. The request for the Lockheed hangar had to do with an 80,000-pound airplane, and we didn't have any runways, other than Whiting, that would handle the airplane, and we didn't have a runway long enough in inventory to handle the airplane. So that was pretty much what happened. We would love to have had the project, but Milton T is only 2,500 feet long, and it's only certified for light general aviation. Whiting has, probably has, the bearing load, but again, we didn't have the infrastructure in place yet to handle the hangar. So that's what happened to it. But what you have to keep focused on, yeah, we'd much, much rather have had it hit Santa Rosa County, but because it didn't, second best choice is somebody to the right or the left of us. So it's still within driving distance for our folks to find employment. Yes, ma'am.
So I'll ask this person the question, if they want something else, please come to Santa Rosa County. That was my main concern. And are we certified at the industrial park yet?
That's, I'll let Commissioner Salter answer that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're not quite there yet. We're going through the process, doing the assessments. Supposedly around August to September, the I-10 park will be ready to be certified, and the 160 acres at the end of Jeff H Road, that will also be ready to be certified. But going back to the Lockheed Martin project, Shannon Ovaltree and I talked numerous times with a young lady who wanted to bring that project to the county, and we were very thankful that she was wanting to do that. Like Commissioner Melvin said, Peter Prince, I believe it's a 4,000-foot runway?
2,500.
Three, 3,500?
2,500.
Roger said 3,500.
Well, you're...
3,700.
Well, that's with overruns. Nope? You sure? All right.
Anyway, Peter Prince runway was not long enough. We didn't have the size of hangar they wanted. We really looked at the potential to meet the timelines at Whiting Aviation Park, which would have been ideal, but obviously, we're not there yet. We did make a commitment to that lady. Hopefully, in the future, we will have Whiting Aviation Park up and running, and that's just a good example of why we have to move forward with getting the infrastructure, getting that part ready to go, because we're going to keep missing opportunities like that if we don't.
Is the road paved? Could I, as an individual, drive on a road and find this park? Because I've never seen it.
If you go, answer your question, yes. If you go to the East Gate Road, the back entrance road to Whiting Field, as you make that big turn going toward the back security gate, all that property on the left, that's the potential Whiting Aviation Park.
That's good. I just want to see us succeed at this, and I know Jerry's probably going to throw rocks at me, but I know that Bill Pullum's property is in foreclosure at the industrial park area, and I'm wondering, would it not be valuable to have that property with ours? And I'm sorry to even talk about buying property, but to me, when you look at the total package, it may be beneficial, and you might be able to get a really good deal from the bank.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on now. Item number one is discussion of an issue of certificate for public conveyance and necessity, COPCN, for operation emergency air ambulance services, transportation services to Air Methods Corporation. I move this for approval without objection. Here, none passes.
To Thursday's agenda.
I'm sorry, to Thursday's agenda. Thank you very much.
And we've got representatives both from Baptist Life Flight and Air Methods here. I think we're going to probably have to do the COPCN, tie that to their consummation of their arrangement, so we'll have to work out those details, but we'll have that on the agenda for you on Thursday.
Item number two is discussion of the county-owned sites in East Milton for proposed judicial facilities. You remember, this board resolved to put two pieces of property on the ballot, let the public pick between the two, the property, a piece of property already in inventory in East Milton and a potential piece of property out on Highway 90. Mr. Walker, are you going to run a slideshow on this, or?
Do you want to put that? And I had asked the engineering department to come up with the 22-acre sites, trying to keep it comparable. Now, I don't know that there's anything magic about that, other than that was the sized property that we've been looking at over it on US-90. And so these were the parcels that you see they came up with is, Rod, you want to show them the Jeff Hs, Jeff H Roads, which really is, that's Jeff H Road to the east of the property. The fairground is immediately to the west. That's cut out of 132 acres that the board had bought, and you see that it's separated from the back of the state prison by the fairgrounds. The red piece is the transition road, and this is to the north of the DJJ property. It's running, the difficulty with that is it's, there's about a 50, 40 to 50-foot fall on that particular piece of property, but that's part of that parcel that the board had bought years ago when we purchased the property for the prison, the current jail, and that infill of the industrial park. The yellow site is the parcel that's on Industrial Boulevard, and that's directly across from the Clear Wyre building, and that's the potential place that we've used in the past for the parking lot for those two buildings. But that's, you see what the, that also has rail access and has some value to it. And then the green property to the south is the industrial, the I-10 park, and it's located off of 87. It is included in the military airport zone, and it's fine for economic development. The military airport zone prohibits public assembly, which that's what this would be deemed. So those were the sites that we look at. There may be others. There's no matching about it. We were just trying to put the, find the best site that would, that would match for what the board's looking for.
Where are the, where's the preponderance of infrastructure, the sewer, water, gas, high-speed internet, fiber optic cable? Where does that, how does that locate itself?
Pretty much each of the, I believe each of these properties, I would think, with the, is going to have the infrastructure fairly proximate to it, I would believe. We've not done all that work yet in the week, but each of these should be fairly easy, because you've got the Jeff H Road piece is directly across from the jail prison. That has the full access, it has full infrastructure, obviously. The yellow piece does. Pullum property should. I don't know about internet access and that particular things, but it's certainly going to have water, sewer. We just have to go back and get engineering to update some of that information.
Could you get them to look at that for us by Thursday?
Sure.
I think that's going to be necessary in order to form an opinion. We're going to need to know where those, which one of those sites are served and which aren't.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Salter?
If we're going to continue to move forward with a potential East Milton site, I'd like for us to reconsider putting Cotton Byram property back in the mix. That way, if that worked, at least for assessment, he had indicated or sent us a letter saying that he would donate that land, and that would prevent us from having to use our industrial lands if we want to have an East Milton site.
I agree with that completely, and I meant to comment earlier. The one in yellow, the Industrial Boulevard courthouse site, I think that land really needs to be reserved for industrial. I don't think we need to consider that. It's my personal opinion, but certainly think that we should include the Cotton Byram site as well.
Commissioner Litchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with you and Commissioner Salter. I think putting the Cotton Byram property back in the mix is probably a good idea. Just looking at these four parcels, this kind of gives you an example of the quandary that you're in when you're looking for an appropriate piece of property for a judicial facility. The yellow site is one of the only sites available with the rail spur, so we're going to, if we put a courthouse there, we've just kind of shot ourselves in the foot from an economic development speaking perspective for that prime access to rail. The red site has a 50-foot fall, 50-foot change in elevation from front of the property to the back, so I don't know how many loads of dirt we'd have to haul in there to level that out, but that's a chunk when you're talking about over 22 acres. And then it's adjacent to a permitted wastewater treatment plant, so we'd be putting the courthouse right next to a sewer facility. The Pullum property down there south of I-10 is in a military airport zone. You can easily see OLF Santa Rosa to the right of that property. It's within that military airport zone, and public assembly is not even a permitted use for that site. You've got student pilots there at OLF Santa Rosa that would be in very close proximity to our judicial facility. So that leaves one more, and that's the Jeff H Road site, which is on, Jeff H Road is a two-lane road in really poor shape last time I was out there. You've got a rail crossing. You know, the rail goes north of Highway 90, so you have to cross the railroad tracks to get there. There's no light, and that's not a controlled crossing, is it? Is it a controlled crossing? Okay, it's a controlled crossing. There's no light at that location, though, so, and I'm sure the road would have to be beefed up substantially or completely redone if you put a judicial facility out there. So, you know, the four sites that we have, there's only one that seems like it's marginally sufficient, and that would be on Jeff Hs, and it still would take a substantial effort to bring it up, just the work that you'd have to do outside the site to bring it up to where it would be suitable. So I think we need to look at the, like Commissioner Salter said, the Cotton Byram property, see what other options are, and take a look at everything.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I appreciate the effort to look out here. It's taken a long time to get this discussion moving this way, so I appreciate the support. I agree with what fellow commissioners say, you know, the I-110 property to the south of Interstate 10 is pretty much off the table, and that may tie in as far as, talked to former Senator Clary this past weekend about, just like with Cotton Byram, he's made a mention of offering a property which would basically be south of I-10 and east of 87 in that corner up there. However, it may very well fall in the same acre zone already there. I've always been a proponent for Cotton Byram's property, and we've had that letter sent to us again when we started looking at properties in the perimeter of Avalon and 90. I agree with the industrial park site, Jeff H site, you know, the transition road sites, they all have weak points in them. My question, though, is when we put out the RFP, we asked for, I believe, 10-plus acres, and now we're looking at, you know, because of comparison, 22-plus acres. I've always thought, and at one point Cindy Anderson, who was an engineer, laid out a plan to put the judicial center just north of where we see the sign that says SRC Jail in that dark area right there. That was always the place where I envisioned it to be, because all these sites, the sheriff's already told us, if I have to load a prisoner in a vehicle and move that prisoner, if I move him two miles, 200 yards, or three, four miles across town, there's not a big cost difference in that, or cost savings in that. We still have capital outlay for a vehicle, deputies, vehicle maintenance, you know, everything, you know? I don't have to go through all that. So I go back to where I'd like to see staff, and also, you could see the road that's laid out there. If you see just to the west of the SRC Jail, that's Judicial Drive. That would be, if you go straight north of there, where 87 North-South Connector would tie in. There, as Sam mentioned before, that would be a very good route from there. Citizens in Navarre and Midway could easily access this, and to the degree the citizens in Gulf Breeze, because once they cross that tall bridge to come from Gulf Breeze to Avalon Boulevard, whether it's up Avalon Boulevard to Highway 90 or hit the interstate and come out to Highway 87, you've paid the toll. It's, you know, that toll's been paid, even if we built it at the foot of the bridge on Garson Point, you still paid the toll. So, you know, a few more miles out there. I would like to take a good, hard look at the property that falls in between the sign that says DJJ and SRC Jail and that road, because if you continue that, I think that's plenty of property. I'm not sure who owns actually the property identified as DJJ, if that's still county property under our control, because there's, you see just a little bit of a building there just below the DJJ sign, but there's a lot of vacant land around there. So how do we incorporate that to where, the idea always was that I've pushed forward, and we know from discussions with the clerk of courts, that, you know, that idea is shrinking. The movement of prisoners is lessening because of electronic communication, but there's still a point in time when that prisoner gets to appear before a judge, before a jury, and the cost savings that would be involved, and I have estimates of that from several years ago, could be at least $50,000 a year, maybe today as much as $100,000 a year in transporting prisoners. The sheriff did indicate he can walk them back and forth if it's that close a proximity. So although that is, the price is coming down because of how many times we've got to move it, there is still a cost identified there. So I'd like to, for this board to direct staff to look at that piece of property and come back to us, along with what Commissioner Melvin recommended, is all the communication access, the infrastructure access, which I believe if we have it at DJJ, we have it at the jail, we're going to find surely we have it there.
Okay. Let's ask the staff to secure a commitment from Mr. Byram, make sure he's still interested in having that discussion with us, to please label the sites with their utilities and bring that back to us for Thursday, please, and I would like to do that in form of a motion without objection.
If we can, we start in a little...
Okay. Is there anybody that wants to speak to the East Milton site discussion? Yes, or come forward, please, name and address.
My name is Sam Mullins, 5922 Allentown Road. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today. I gave each one of the commissioners, and I believe, one for Hunter Walker, Ms. Angela Jones, a little packet there that I put together, and you can, if you don't mind, I'd like for you to put your map that you had back up. Thank you. And the first part of this shows exactly what you have there on the northern part, excluding the I-10 industrial park. If you flip over the next page, and this is a tax thing from, no, I'm running short, I'm sorry. Can y'all share? I apologize, I ran out of ink. Anyway, I was going, what I've got here, the next page, is from Greg Brown's office, tax praiser's office, and my first question to y'all is, why on the transition road property is that broken out when it shows here that it's 113 acres? And why did they choose the worst part of the property when it came to elevation whenever the front part of that property has less than a five-foot elevation change? Can anyone answer that question?
Mr. Boylock?
Mr. Mullins, are you talking about this property here?
I'm talking about, right there, yes, sir. The tax...
That is downrange of a current gun range. There's a permitted gun range here, and this is the transition road, and this was 22 and a half acres that fit there.
Well, according to the map I have, it shows Transition Road being to the right of the J, last J on the DJJ sign. Now, that's according to what was, you know, what...
That's not accurate.
That's not accurate? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
There is a driveway that parallels Gulf Power, but that driveway serves just the treatment plant site. City of Milton's going to upgrade that driveway, and it serves the DJJ facility, but the right away that's reserved and had been planned is this extension, follow the arrow.
I thought that was Judicial Boulevard.
That's the future 87 bypass right away that's been reserved.
Mr. Boylock? The gun range that I'm familiar with out there is a totally enclosed interior gun range, belongs to Blackwater, and you can go in there and shoot all sorts of stuff. There may be another one, but everybody's shaking their heads. I've been in that one. It's an interior gun range, just like the military has.
Yes, the state prison has their indoor, I think, one you're describing here, but this is our sheriff's gun range that's been permitted.
Okay, I just wanted to clear it up, because...
Okay, and that's, but what you're showing there, that's to the, good ways to the west of the Santa Rosa County jail, is that correct? Well, according to what I looked on the map there, it was about 200 feet to the west of the Santa Rosa, excuse me, the sheriff's department. So you actually have area behind your jail and your sheriff's department, which would not be in the way of your gun range.
The reserve right away is 150 feet, Mr. Mullins, for that future bypass.
I understand, but you have 200 feet there. That's my point. And all along in this consideration, no one, and this is what we've been asking all along, is that we would consider building a courthouse or criminal justice center, if you will, attached to the jail, so that it would minimize security costs, minimize operation costs, make for a smaller footprint that would allow to save the taxpayers' dollars. That's what we've asked all along, and in these considerations and the properties you have here, none of them are anywhere near the jail. Am I correct in that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The gun range is about 200 feet from the property you're talking about? You want to put a courthouse next to a gun range where people are in that courthouse doing business all day long?
Is that an indoor range or an outdoor range?
Let me finish. And then you keep saying that we're asking to do this and that, where there are other people who have asked us not to do this. So when you say you keep asking, there are a lot of people who talk to me who don't want it in East Milton, so you got both sides.
So you're first spending more of our tax dollars, is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
We'll get to that.
If you put an industry on that site you're talking about, what will that industry pay in taxes over 50 years?
I thought that the job of the county commissioners was to be about governance, not about economic development and property development.
I think the job of county commissioners is common sense.
I agree with that.
Well...
Now, I'll finish up here, and then I'll let other people have a chance to speak, because I know a lot of people want to speak. In these renderings, and yes, there is a gun range there, but it's an outdoor range, and it could be moved very easily to the back of the property where you have that 50-foot drop, which would actually enhance the safety of the gun range. That could be very easily done for a little expense. Because of the 50-foot drop of the property on Transition Road, it would provide a natural barrier against, you know, unaimed rounds or accidental rounds going off. So that could be included in this plan, but there's three different renderings there, and these are just approximate. The first rendering shows a criminal justice wing attached to the jail with parking, three different areas of parking that you could do, and some optional tie-ins to the roads there, but that one alone... But that one alone, in using an engineering scale and measuring on the map, just the footprint of the building, a single-story building would be over a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand square foot. According to your engineer drawings, a hundred and eighty thousand square foot under roof is what was required for everything. So that means you would only have a small portion that would have to be a two-story. The rest of it would be a single story. It would reduce the cost of construction. The next one, little smaller rendition, same thing. That rendition would bring it down to a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and forty thousand under roof, but again, if you build a good portion of it two-story, you could reach that magic hundred and eighty thousand square foot very easily. Plenty of area for parking and still have area for additional expansing to the west, especially if you move the gun range. The last rendition that I have, and you have a lot of people who still would like the idea of maybe leaving the downtown Milton courthouse, having some kind of presence there open. If at all possible, and if that were what came about, that's what the people decided, why not renovate the old downtown courthouse to have family court and divorce court held there? And then make a criminal justice center that would be strictly attached to the jail with a smaller footprint. Even that one there has a footprint of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand square foot with plenty of area for parking, plenty of area east and to the north, I mean, excuse me, west and to the north for expansion. That right there, you still reduce your security costs, you reduce your operating costs and save the taxpayers' dollars. And that's what I ask you all to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Sam made a couple of excellent points that I would like, I would like the staff to take a look at, and that is to remediate the forty-foot drop that was pointed out. We could very easily move the gun range. Let's take a look at those options so that we've got a full range of options before us so that we've got something to pick and choose from, please. Yes, ma'am, name and address for the record.
Ruth Dupont Esser, four-three-seven-one Maryland Court, Gulf Breeze, Florida. I can't say that I am for the sites that we're showing by the jail. The blue one is sitting next to what's not shown on here, which is a huge dirt pit that's being built for years. It's owned by a guy that owns a construction company, and I just don't think our courthouse should sit next to a dirt pit. And the bypass road that we say will come through one day, anyone who deals with developing land realizes that that's going to take quite a lot of money to bring that bypass road. It's going to have to cross a lot of wetlands. You're going to have a lot of environmental impact fees and it's the old bird in the hands better than one in the air. Who knows when we would have a road coming through in order to cause that courthouse to be locally located in a manner that we could get to it. There are two sites that I would think would be logical, Mr. Byron Cotton's and Mr. Charlie Clary's. And, you know, on Charlie Clary's, it's not shown on there, but it's by eighty-seven and the interstate, of which he sounds open-minded to being very reasonable about possibly donating the twenty, twenty-two acres we would need because of the increase in his value of his other property around it that would take place. I realize that the military base is there, but surely if we bought three million dollars worth of land just a few short years ago in order to make an industrial park, and surely if Bill Pullum created that industrial park that's next to it, then we could get the variances needed to create a courthouse there. If we put the courthouse in East Milton, East Milton is ripe for growth and we're going to get restaurants and we're going to get increased taxation on less, backs of less people, so that will help us in all kinds of ways. It gives us jobs and such. The site that I'm least for is the Highway ninety site, and here's why, three reasons. Number one, the traffic is horrendous through there. Since Pace developed, you can sit in a car for God knows how long trying to get through that area, and I just feel like putting more traffic on top of that at this time would not serve well unless we're planning on creating an overpass that's going to go across ninety and then touch into Avalon, which then again would cost us a fortune. The second reason is the cost of the property. I can't see why we would pay one million four hundred thousand for some property when we have people who are willing to donate us property. The other thing is that that property is not owned by Charter Bank. It is owned by Brian Di Maria. He bought it in December and on March fifth, Milton Crossings LLC was opened and that land was transferred to it. I have nothing against this as long as Mr. Di Maria plans to deed to us that land for free rather than profiting so heavily on us. When his land next to it, he bought the whole forty-four acres from Charter Bank, the land next to what we would buy would grow, go up growth rapidly in value and he could more than regain any losses that he had taken in that deal. I think that we need to look out for the people, we need to be responsible. This is going to be our centerpiece to our county and we want it to be beautiful, we want to be proud of it. So wherever we put it, we want to consider traffic, we want to consider future development, and we want to consider the pocketbooks of the people of Santa Rosa County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wallace Mahoot, fifty-five-hundred Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I keep hearing one argument about putting the new judicial center near the prison being the wastewater treatment plant that is proposed in that area. And I remember during our well field protection efforts, we had to carve out a little space just for that wastewater treatment plant. We didn't have a problem with that because it was down gradient from all our public drinking water wells. And at that time, the argument was that it's going to be a new plant, it's going to be so much better than the old plant, and now I'm hearing that as an argument against putting a judicial center in that area. So are there two different stories to this wastewater treatment plant? Or is the story that we were given during the well field protection efforts that this is going to be a new plant, the water coming out of it will be, you could drink it if you needed to? So I would imagine that the odors at this plant would also be well-controlled. So let's stick with one story or the other. The Highway eighty-seven location, I've heard that it's in a military airport zone and public assembly is not permitted in a military airport zone. Well, we have two prisons out there in that area. If that's not public assembly, I don't know what is, and they're stuck in their cells. They're nowhere to run if something happens. And I know Randy Roy is in the audience today. I did consult the military on this when I was checking into this location, and I did not bring that information with me today, but to me, it seems like depending on what the classification of the judicial center will be, would make it more likely that it could be located there. And I will get that information to you this week so that I can talk about it on Thursday. But the more I looked at that location, just because of the military airport zone, didn't seem to be that much of a problem. I like the eighty-seven site and I like the site next to the prison. The thing about the eighty-seven site is there is no rail. It's still close to the prison. You would not have to wait for rail cars if one was going through there. So, but I do, I like the eighty-seven site and I like the site by the prison. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Rhonda Chavers, six-three-oh-eight Fairfield Drive, Milton. I just have a couple of questions. This is kind of new to me and I apologize for not being on top of this. How many sites are we considering now? Three? I mean, y'all were talking earlier today and of course, the information I've gotten is from the newspaper. I hadn't been to these meetings and sometimes that's not as clear as it should be, but y'all are wanting to consider the site on Highway ninety, the site here in the industrial park area, correct? Is that?
Yes, ma'am. The purpose, this discussion item right here is to discuss the East Milton potentials.
Okay.
And we're going to discuss the other ones at the next item.
Okay, so this is East Milton, okay.
If you would, just limit your comments to East Milton.
Okay. Well, when we voted to put the jail out there, didn't we have a jail tax and we voted for that? And we named a boulevard, Judicial Boulevard, in that area? And that kind of, the taxpayers and all of us thought, well, y'all are going to put a judicial center there because it's Judicial Boulevard. So I guess I would be in favor of us putting a judicial center there similar to what Sam Mullins said and put the criminal court there and maybe leave the family court so you don't raid downtown Milton, family court and divorce court in that area and renovate it and make it conducive to similar what Walton County did to their courthouse and then utilize the land that we already own and not buy new property and take anything out of the tax base. The county owns property all over and then when you do buy property on Highway ninety and any other property, you're raiding the tax base even further and weakening our resources. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
My name is Richard Baldwin, five-three-two-six Morgan Ridge Drive. Just want to speak in behalf of that we, first of all, I know the hard work that all of you put into trying to research all the details. Obviously, the courthouse being built, a new one, we're so overcrowded downtown Milton that's pitiful and with crying to widen Highway ninety, I think the East Milton is a great choice in the sense that it's off the eighty-seven corridor, coming off the interstate. I think it makes a lot of sense. I think it makes a lot of sense that we, as a county, own so much property out there. The beauty of at least deciding to move the courthouse and finally build this courthouse has been over how many years? And I think what we're trying to do is not to look at what I want in our county today or what you want in our county today, or not even what our children want, but our grandchildren. We have to look forward to why the Santa Rosa County is going to. First of all, I commend all of you, it's, we've done a lot of growth, a lot of major hurricanes that have come through the county. My God, you guys have done a great job. You should pat yourself on, you know, on the back. But we need to go ahead and get this courthouse built, and I think on property that the county already owns is the best way to go. Then also moving it out from downtown Milton. Milton being the county seat is a blessing and a curse in the sense that, correct me if I'm wrong, but county property gives no tax base to the city, is that correct? Okay, that's what I thought. So if we move the courthouse out of there, then finally, maybe, then Milton can develop their downtown area to bring restaurants. I have been to San Antonio, Texas, which sits right on a river. Have any of you ever been to San Antonio? It's pretty. I love the Blackwater a lot more, and I think the potential that we have to develop that for our county and bring more taxes into our system and revenues for schools, community centers, senior centers, libraries, bringing things up to date. Again, I'm looking forward to not just my generation or the next one, but our grandchildren's generation. Where will we be fifty years from now? And I think that's what we really have to look at. East Milton has tremendous, tremendous potential for growth. Makes it easy for accessibility from all parts of the county, whether down in Navarre and Holly area or up in J coming back down. So there is the accessibility issue, I think that is really good. So I agree with Sam Mullins, a lot of his points and a lot of points that y'all have made, but I think that the East Milton, we have so many choices and the county owns the property already. That's a win-win situation. So what I'd like to see that encourage y'all to do is we just got to fish or cut bait and say, let's go ahead and do this and get this new courthouse built because downtown Milton, it is so congested and all the lawyers' offices around it, none of the businesses. I've talked to the business owners, I'm with Historical Society, you know, the Arts and Culture Foundation, we do the Get a Taste for Art Riverwalk Art Festival, and I always hear these, like the old post office as well, they'd like to develop more and different things, but there's this elephant that sits in the middle of the room and that's called the courthouse. It's outdated, outmoded, overcrowded, a lot of logistical problems. If we move the courthouse to East Milton, which I think you're all in agreeance with and of course, bring to the county vote, I think that that's the best choice and I commend you for finally getting on the docket and let's just get on with the business, doing business, get it built. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Janet Colter, six-nine-five-three Summit Place, Milton. I'm here as a couple of things. I am a realtor and my concern with moving the courthouse, all of it, out somewhere else will devastate downtown Milton. We're already there. We have so many empty rentals right now, we can't seem to fill them. I feel like if the courthouse is not renovated, for Sam's plan sounded fantastic, I think that that's probably our best option at this moment, saving tax dollars, keeping Milton intact. I don't see us taking that base away from downtown Milton. We have a beautiful city. We are finally getting some activity. I know there's a pizza place going in down there. I know that Doc's is putting in a new restaurant and this will be devastating for him. But the family law, I believe, would be, would sustain that building. We don't have a lot of traffic, maybe twice a month, but most of that's for jewelry. I think we have plenty of parking over in that parking lot, just north of the courthouse and in the back, you know? Even building a garage and during your renovation, consider a two-park, two-story or three-story parking garage in the back if it, if you, if you're, you know, trying to find more parking and let that pay for some of the expense. I know people would park, I mean, you go down to New Orleans, down there Riverwalk, you pay for parking. People don't mind doing that. We have a lot of festivals there. Our Historical Society would be devastated by this move as well. So those are things to consider. I think Sam's got a great plan and it should be considered highly. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Did you want to make a comment? We'll try to make this our last comment so we can move on to the next. We're going to modify the amendment here just very shortly. Go ahead, yes, ma'am, name and record.
My name is Cindy Colter Booth and my home address is fourteen-hundred Highway ninety-six Malino, but I have a business since nineteen ninety, Seacolter Corporation on the corner of Berry Hill and Willing. I'm probably the oldest business downtown and if the gentleman had come ask me that said he's solicited all the businesses downtown, I would have gave him a different feedback. I do agree with Sam Mullins, that's a great idea. Do y'all plan on moving this little existing, in this part of the judicial center? I mean, would this be moved to when the courthouse moves? Y'all would stay here? Well, Milton's been very good to me. I have been there when my buildings were twenty-five percent occupiable. I have renovated all the buildings on the corner of Berry Hill and Willing. Right now, Milton is on its uphill climb, okay? Don't go changing people. The courthouse is a good thing for downtown, it's been our core, it needs to stay our core. If it go to a lot of the old cities in Alabama, they preserve that. And I'm not understanding why the Historical Society wouldn't want to preserve or the Main Street Milton or why they wouldn't want to preserve the court feeling in the courthouse areas, then that's what it was intended for. Like I said, my business is climbing now. I think that when you start doing this, it's going to start devastating what we already have existing. We have a quiet community, that's why people were drawn to downtown. When people come through, you can feel safe walking the streets downtown, you can push your kids. People come in my store because they know that they're safe and it's quiet. I'm afraid that when people come in with the big businesses and think they're going to commercialize us downtown, it's not a good thing. I think what they got on the table about the boardwalk extending it down and making it more a natural family community with the bike trails and all that, but you know, the attorneys and the lawyers that have their businesses downtown, they pay taxes. And so I think that these charitable communities, the organizations coming in and not being able to pay taxes like I do every year, that is not a good thing for any town because our tax base. Because our tax bases go up, being the taxpayers. So I agree with Sam Mullins, I think it's a great idea. I do not agree with the library thing coming downtown, just not a good thing. I am a business owner, I've probably been there longer than anybody on that street. So Milton is growing, and I have books to prove it, that we're finally climbing up. So don't go moving the courthouse.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your input. We're gonna open it up to the board now, but, but just to kind of cap what I've, the notes I've made from the public, we need to, we need to make sure that Mr. Byram is willing to discuss the property with us. The gun range certainly wouldn't outweigh the courthouse in priority, so we need to look at the potential for using the better piece of that land, the level land, and relocating the gun range. We need the utilities labeled, so that when we see this Thursday, we can have a, a better visual of what we're talking about. I'd appreciate it if you'd staff with the bar the idea that Mr. Mullins brought forward about the family and divorce court staying in Milton, and splitting it out, and, and take the temperature of the legal community on that issue. And I'll open this up to the other commissioners, the Commerce and Judiciary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I heard mention of another piece of property that someone may be interested in donating to the county.
I did leave that out, and it was not on, but I did not do that deliberately. Thank you. The, the property on 87, I think it was Mr. Clary's property. We need to, we need to have that as well. Thank you.
A couple of things. The, I'm, I'm fine with having staff look at the possibility of bifurcating the courthouse functions, but no, when we talk about cost savings, if we have a courthouse in downtown Milton, and we have a courthouse in East Milton, or a courthouse in the Pace area, you're gonna have two court security staff, two offices for the clerk of courts, two large facilities to maintain, so there's gonna be significant overhead associated with having your judicial facilities located in two separate areas. You know, one of the, we're, we're trying to be diligent with, with taxpayer money, that's one thing that we need to get a rough estimate of. If we do, if we were to bifurcate the judicial functions of the courthouse, what's that gonna mean? And what's that gonna mean to our, to our judges that may have dockets in family law and criminal? You know, how are they gonna handle that if they have two offices and two separate Just, just a few considerations I think we need to keep in mind.
Mr. Chairman, as mentioned, I mean, kind of the more things change, the more they stay the same. When we were looking at this in the early 2000s, that was certainly recommended, and, and I believe, Ms. Wright can help me recall, but I believe we looked at that, and, and it was a significant increase in the operation, operating expenses. That, the old courthouse now, it's a sick old building. I'm not sure that you're gonna really be, gonna be able to renovate that, Sam. I'm just telling you, it's, it's got marble in it, it's got the marble floors, it goes up, as you know, to, to four, five feet. I mean, it is, it was a building built in the, in the 20s, and served well. I, I just don't know that that particular concept's gonna work. I think we can go back and try to figure out how to, how to use the property north of the jail. With the, with the, with 87 going through there, I don't know how you're gonna split that property. And I just don't think there's enough property to put the courthouse there. We certainly look at that, we can look at Senator Clary's property that he'd come in, also Mr. Byram's. I mean, we can look at all, all that. Obviously, we want to get a quality site for you to look at in, in East Milton, as a, as a comparison, and that's what the board directed us to do. That's what we're trying to do. I don't know how you're gonna be able to keep the, the courthouse downtown. I mean, that was, that was, that was, that was the whole purpose of, of, of the iteration in early 2000s, is they were gonna renovate the courthouse, and they were gonna build a, a, a large courthouse, but, but, a, a large facility behind it to replace it. And it just, it, it was rejected. So I'm just, the, the, the whole point's try to find the best place for it, and, and, and try to get it done, because it's a, it's just a sick old building on its best day. So I mean, we need to be doing the best we can to move forward. We'll, we'll try to get these, I just don't know if we're gonna have all this done by Thursday.
Yep.
We'll try.
Yeah, if, if we could nail down the big pieces, looking at the Cotton Byram's property, taking a look at feasibility of relocating the gun range, we definitely have to have the utilities labeled. I mean, we, we really can't make an informed decision.
I understand. All I'm saying is you may just have to, it, it may be better to wait two weeks and let us go back and, and, and include these other two pieces of property, determine the utilities to each one of them. That's what we had done on the sites, as we were going through the, the process. So we're, we're with you on that.
I personally have no problem with that. I don't know what the rest of the board would say about that. Two weeks is supposed to bring it through Thursday.
I agree with Mr. Walker. I don't think you can do a proper assessment by Thursday, so.
Well, let's. But we gotta find a site, so we've gotta bring it back, and, and the sooner the better, y'all, and for the public and for us.
We need, we need to nail down the Clary property, we need to nail down the Byram property. We need to evaluate the feasibility of moving the gun range, so we can utilize the better piece of that property, and we need to label the utilities.
And I will note, on the, on the Clary property, at least, tentative, when we looked at the, at, the MARS is a, is a semicircle, and so I don't, it, it impacts the Pullum property for the public assembly, but I don't, but I think the, the bulk of the Clary property, again, going by what we saw, and Rod, you want to try to show that, the bulk of what I understand to be the Clary property is gonna be outside of the MARS? And you see that, you see that?
My understanding is that it's closer to the intersection, much closer than the pointer.
Right.
If, if you bring the pointer back to the intersection of 87 and 90 right now.
To the west of that.
And then move west, just one click, right there, I think you're gonna see, that's, I'm thinking that's what he's talking about. I haven't seen anything in writing, but.
But let us bring that back.
All right, if you would, Mr. Cooley, we'll take one more comment on this, and then we're gonna move to item three.
Jerry Cooley, 6049, on his way. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. We, we talked about it, I know I talked about it in, in '04, and probably as far back as 2000. A simple Google search on the internet of the U.S. oldest courthouses, you'll find some that are 240 years old, operational today. Most of them built at the time with some of the same materials that we have in a courthouse Clearly, the problem with the current courthouse is the basement. It's, it's undeniable. You, you have, it's, it's a moisture issue, it continues to be. But I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to disagree that we can't do anything about it. There, there, there's dirt around here, and there's cement around here, and one of the things that I proposed in 2004 was to seal it professionally, back the dirt truck in, fill the, fill the basement full of dirt, cap it off with two feet of, of cement, and call it a day. You will effectively end your moisture problem when you do that. And, and, and everybody you talk to, that's always the problem. It's a mold issue, it's a moisture issue, it, it continues to be impossible to heat and air conditioning because of the moisture. I think that can be solved relatively easy. I certainly like what Walton County did, because they left the, the original facade, you could walk through the historic building into the new court facility. And, you know, I heard a comment by Mr. Walker, that it was rejected. Well, I don't know who rejected it. I know there was a lot of discussion, maybe it was the commissioners at the time. But as we have continued this discussion to move towards East Milton, I think we should also open the discussion again about the courthouse in its current position. I, I, I think the courthouse can be fixed. I really do. We, we missed a grand opportunity in '04 with Hurricane Ivan, when money was flowing like milk and honey. We didn't take advantage of some of that. But I believe it can be fixed, with, with the right time, with the right attitude. You know, it's, it's real easy to say, well, it's old, and I want something new. Well, in, in Philadelphia, they have a courthouse that's 239 years old. Amazingly enough, they were able to get fiber optic cable there. They actually have a working air conditioning and heating system in it. I mean, I hate to throw things away, and then, and then leave them up for what anybody might want to do with them down the road. I think it can be fixed, and, and serious consideration should be given for the Milton site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. We'll, we'll move this to the next set of meetings, and that way we'll have more information, we'll be more adequately prepared to deal with it. We've closed out this item. You want to speak to us on this item?
I would like the office.
Yes, ma'am. This is absolutely the last speaker. We've got a big agenda to deal with.
Mr. Chairman, also.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Romi White. I'm here on behalf of Navarre Press. There are hundreds of acres that the county owns in the East Milton area, in the general vicinity of East Milton Road. For whatever reason, I haven't been able to talk to the county staff on this yet, but I'm not sure why they only selected a few of those acres to be presented for consideration for the future courthouse. And so I'd like to ask you commissioners if you might want to take a closer look at some of the other county-owned acreage out there for consideration, or get some more information about why those were excluded or included for the presentation. Also, just real quick, I know that we're going to go from, start talking about the P. Rich property, so I don't have to come back up. The Damaria purchase wasn't disclosed at the last meeting, and I was wondering why that happened. And then also, the Centers of School Board purchased 400, 40 acres for $440,000 in the vicinity of the P. Rich parcel last year, and I've been told the appraisal hasn't been done on the Damaria property yet. And so I'm just, you know, wondering, when are we gonna do that due diligence, if you might want to address that? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'm sure we'll hit those before this day is over. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I thank everybody for bringing this subject up after, as long as it's taken to get here. I wanted staff to take a good, hard look at the piece just north of the jail. As I said, it's, at one point, I had it, two years ago, when I was trying to get it on the ballot, I had it laid out, then to fit in that piece of property. So I really want to take a look at that. But I, I do also want to shift focus to the folks downtown. I sit on the Downtown Redevelopment Board. I've talked to people from Main Street Milton. What we have downtown right now, business owners like yourself, really don't know the direction that downtown's gonna go. And it makes it hard for you as a business owner, or a person that respectively may want to develop in downtown, to know what's gonna happen. Where, where's this courthouse gonna go? I don't know if you've seen it, Main Street Milton has a very nice brochure on how they would like to refurbish the courthouse. The Downtown Development Board has, has looked at that. I see the future of downtown Milton being very bright. I don't, I agree with Commissioner Lynch, though. We, we have to look at expense. We're talking this morning about moving the courthouse beside the jail to curtail expense and transportation of prisoners, and then on this next note, we talk about building multiple facilities that, you know, everybody's gonna know. If you have more than one facility, you've got double the, double the labor cost, double, you know, in, in security and different things. So I really want to take a hard look at that. Another thing, I don't think, even if we do the renovations on the courthouse, as, as indicated, it could be done while occupied. Not, you know, so we may want to plan the facility we're building now, large enough to go ahead and house everything, and then step back and take a look at it. Take a look at Main Street Milton's plan, take a look at possibly renovating it into a, you know, where just family-type court is. But I, I seriously think that we need to consider looking at the properties, putting it on the ballot for both properties, and, and then build something substantial enough, because if we, if we moved out of it, say if we went into there for a couple of years with family court and everything, and then decide that as a community, we want to refurbish downtown, do a proper job of refurbishing it, because the facility is, is empty. We could do a proper job. I don't see any way to do this, this sizable construction, or reconstruction, or renovation that would be necessary to do downtown while functions are going on. So I think that we need to keep that in consideration for where, where do we want to go? Let's get a facility built that's large enough, that satisfies our needs, and then step back and take a look at where we want to go. Whether it's the direction that Main Street Milton wants to go, with a community center and library and cultural center, or keep it in, in the court facilities. But I, I'd just like everybody to kind of be thinking about that, because to do that would, I think, would be very necessary, to have the building empty for a time being.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Cole. We'll move that issue to the next set of meetings. There's noted, staff is clear on what we'd like to see. Item number three is discussion of real property purchase agreement with Milton Crossings LLC for approximately 22-acre parcel on U.S. High, U.S. 90 for proposed judicial facility. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your package, you see that real estate agreement. It is with Milton Crossing. They were brought in by the, the bank several, several weeks ago, several months ago originally, and I don't know, I think they traded the end of February. So it didn't trade, it changed anything of our, our proposal, or, or the, the funding, or the, the funding, the, the cost, or, or anything else. So we were moving forward with it. This is, this is the same, it has the same opt-out provisions that the, the board had, had discussed before. Ms. Jones can go into it. It's the same pricing that we've talked about. To us, it was indifferent who we, who, who we purchased the project from, in the event that the, the voters approved the project. So that, that was, that was our thinking on that. And this is the contract. We're gonna buy the property from somebody ultimately, if we, if that's what we choose to do. But we don't have to. You know, you opt out until, I believe it's November 21st.
I got the, I picked my briefing book up Friday, and that was the first indication I had that there was anybody in the deal other than Charter Bank, and I was really caught off guard by that. I noticed the comments from the attorney documents to follow, and there's a, a purchase agreement, et cetera, but I don't see an appraisal. Has that been done, and I just don't have it? Or where are we?
No, no, sir. That would standardly be something done during our due diligence period. We've not expended any money on any sort of investigation, be it a Phase 1 environmental study and appraisal, or anything of that nature, until the property's under contract, and then we can go about expending those sums. As Mr. Walker mentioned, we can withdraw from the contract at any time prior to November the 20th, without any penalty, if any of those things were found to be unacceptable, or if you all, for any reason, just decided this was not the place to put a courthouse.
Well, I, I just, you know, it seems just absolutely backwards to me to do due diligence on the price after we sign a, a contract for sale based on public's approval. That's just backwards to my way of thinking, but I expected to see a... Well, just a moment, we'll, we'll open up in a minute. But I, I had expected to see, you know, just the normal stuff, you know, somebody's third-party unbiased opinion of what the property's worth. But anybody else on, on the board like to say something about this before we open to the public? Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, in all fairness, with regards to the valuation, I mean, value is what two parties place on a piece of property. Whenever I've bought property, I've never got an appraisal on it before I made an offer. I've always had an, had a contract in place before you get an appraisal on the property. So I, I don't think anything here is out of the ordinary course of business.
Well, you're saying you, you feel like 1.4 is probably a fair offer?
I'm sorry?
You, you feel like the 1.4 is a fair offer? I, I, I'm, I don't have an opinion right now, but I don't have, I don't know what it's worth.
I think it's, it's the offer. You know, I mean, we, we put out the request proposals, this, this board selected that proposal at an earlier meeting.
Okay.
It is, it is contingent upon, basically at our whim. We can cancel the contract for any reason. And I think the important thing to remember is that at our last set of meetings, we said that this would be put on the ballot. And what we're trying to do in East Milton is select another site for the ballot so that our residents will have two options. We're not going to make the choice for you. Where do you want it? Do you want it in P Ridge or do you want it in East Milton? You're going to make that choice. And we're trying to find a suitable property in East Milton to put on the ballot. I'm all for looking at the property that Sam proposed. Looks like it makes sense. Now, I don't know how it will impact the proposed 87 connector, but we'll find out. Again, we're not making the decision on where the courthouse goes ultimately. We're giving you options. The people in Pace, the people in Gulf Breeze, Navar, Milton, Jay, you're going to have to look at the property in P Ridge and the property in East Milton and determine which is more suitable. And knowing that, there's going to be an additional cost associated with the property in P Ridge. The choice is yours.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Another thing I'd like to look at too, we now, by the citizens coming forward and being able to look at East Milton, we have one, if not two, potential independent owners of properties that are willing to deed over to this county 15 to 20 acres because they realize the value of that project on their remaining acreage. There's a benefit cost there. Both Cotton Byram said that years ago. I'm sure Mr. Clary realizes that. Now that the Highway 90 property isn't the lone property that we're looking at, and we have citizen support to look at East Milton, and I thank you again for that, Mr. Damarra and the holding company that he stood up now, I've approached him one time about doing just that, giving us a piece of property. He did offer to give us a 60-foot right-of-way off the, what would be our western border of the piece that we've identified, off of his property, and told his attorney and our attorney to add that to the contract so we would have that northern connectability. But now perhaps we ought to go back and try to lever that. But that's just some food for thought that staff may ought to do because, like I say, there's two other people stepping up to the plate on that piece of property. The other part of the sales contract that I want to make sure that everybody's aware of, that the county attorneys has written in here that in the event, basically in the event that we do not pass a sales tax or that property's not chosen, we're not penalized in any way. So, you know, we're not obligated to buy this property. We're not obligating ourselves to buy this property. We're just getting an option so the property can clearly be put on the referendum this year.
Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Lynchard. The last time we met, we agreed. We went through an RFP process. The P Ridge property emerged as our choice. So we have that one for the public to choose or not choose. And then when we met last time, we were talking about coming up with an East Milton site for the same consideration. So I think what I'd like to see is to leave the P Ridge site where it is, eventually, hopefully get to one in East Milton, and then let the people decide on which one they want.
Thank you, Mr. Salter. Mr. Cooley.
Jerry Cooley, 6049 Arnie's Way. First thing I'd like to say is Greg Brown was successful in his defense of fairness in taxation, and there's $10 million on the table coming to Santa Rosa County. And I'd like to encourage the Board of County Commissioners to use that $10 million on this courthouse issue, right out of the gate before it gets spent for something else. I think money in the hand right now could be well-spent and take a tax burden off the citizens. I certainly understand what has gone on in the last few meetings. And I'm going to have to say, I think you were a little rash as a board, a little quick to decide to put two things on the ballot. There's way more things at play here than two places. From a personal standpoint, I believe on the ballot needs to be, will you support a tax for a judicial center? Yes or no?
Maybe.
And secondly, when folks make that decision, then maybe there's a 90, maybe there's East Milton, maybe there's Renovate where it's sitting in a reasonable package. I'm going to tell you, like I said before, I stand up in support of getting some kind of new facility here. And if you put two items on the ballot, I think it's going to fail. You're going to have a split vote, and it'll wind up causing too much confusion. So I want you to think about that for a moment, to separate those two items, because I think it's going to be a problem in the voter's mind. Now, I want to get back to this Highway 90 property, and I'm going to tell you that I rise in opposition to that Highway 90 property. And I rise in opposition to some of the behaviors that I have seen. Okay? This is a complete remake of the purchase of the Pullum property, playing around with appraisals and this and this, and we go here and we go here and we don't know who we're dealing with. Ms. Jones, in order to come up with $1.4 million, somebody needs to know what a piece of property's worth. I strongly support what Commissioner Melvin said this morning. Due diligence needs to be done ahead of the game, not after the game. I'm going to tell you right now that that property was valued at $26,000 an acre last year. I want somebody to explain to me how it gets to $63,000 an acre this year. Okay? That's wrong. That's obscene. It should not be considered. We've heard the school board, $1,100, $11,000 an acre. They just bought near that. Okay? There are too many questions swirling around this Highway 90 property. As a citizen who has done his best to keep this government open, it's being, the doors being slammed on us again. This appraisal should have been done a long time ago. Just because somebody believes it's worth $1.4 million doesn't make it so. There's no way that property is worth $1.4 million. There's the comps for you right there. $26,000, school board buys for $11,000? It's there. It's not worth it. The taxpayers don't believe it's worth it. I'll say it again. I rise in opposition to this property being on the ballot, period, end of story. And my final statement is, I would like to see a commissioner today make a motion to move that off the ballot. I think it's a bad choice. There's too many questions around it. I think we need to step up and eliminate that from this pool of potential locations. Okay? $1.4 million is not a good deal for anybody. And as I've said before, and I'll say it again, if that property remains in the queue for a courthouse, you can count on your sales tax not passing.
My name is Robert Rollo.
Turn the light on there, Commissioner. Just push the button, make the red light come on.
My name is Robert Rollo. I live at 9250 Barney Broxton Road in East Milton. I'd like to speak on behalf of part of Mr. Cooley's request. I want to commend the commissioners for taking the diligence to shop and look. I personally would support a sales tax for the courthouse. I cannot support it if it's tied to buying land anywhere. You don't need to buy land, and that's my opinion. But I think if it takes two weeks, like Mr. Walker said, before you get all the cost in order, I think the commissioners ought to take whatever time is necessary. Put one item on the ballot. If you put two or three items on there tied to a sales tax in either place, I personally am going to get out and work to defeat it. But I would support a sales tax just for the courthouse. But if you tie it to two or three parcels, ain't no way. So I would ask that you take the due diligence time to consider all of the options and all of the places. Put one item on the ballot, and let's go with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sharon Glass, 5661 Windrun Road Place, I'm sorry, in Pace. And what I would like to do, I have been following the newspaper. I've been following a lot of things about the properties. And it's apparent in the room today, most people are for the East Milton property or doing something with the downtown property. Mr. Cole, you've been to our meetings at Santa Rosa Tea Party Patriots, and I believe they made clear what we wanted, which was the East Milton property. And at that time, you told us that you would push forward with it. Mr. Melvin, I believe that you have helped to bring that to the front too. Now, I challenge you two men today as to why you voted for the Highway 90 property when that could have been stopped immediately.
I'm going to interrupt you. I'm going to interrupt you right there. I voted against the Highway 90.
I'm sorry. Okay. Then we have a missing commissioner here because he's ill. I understand that. So, but it could have been stopped. And let me say with what I have seen, and I will, just like the other people that have stood here, work diligently, and I have a marketing background and a media background, I will work diligently to see that we do have a new courthouse because we need a new courthouse. There's not anybody in this room that does not agree with that. But we do not need more land. We have enough land. And I would think that we have you in the position that you are to make the right decisions. And I don't understand why we brought all, we have all the property out at the jail with it named Judicial Boulevard or whatever the name is if we didn't intend originally to build a courthouse there. And with all that's happening on the 87 corridor, I think that that is an ideal place. And I looked at the growth, South Santa Rosa County is growing rapidly. So you can look for things to happen out there. But I think you need to think about, just as you were challenged a minute ago to pull that 90 off, there is too much going on. I've even watched some of the trails and they just don't look good. And I say, pull that off. There's enough out there for us to decide on than to waste our time moving from LCC to LCC to whatever. So that's just my, you know, opinion.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question that was asked is why, and I'm going to identify it myself, supported going to Highway 90. I supported the two-and-a-half-mile radius because I could never get this type of reaction before for East Milton. For the eight years that I've tried to get it out there, for the last two years ago when I tried to get it on the ballot, public record shows how many times I've tried to get this into discussion, and East Milton never got this type of reaction. Loretta's back there shaking, pointing her finger toward herself. So Loretta was there with me the whole time, so she can identify that. The Tea Party told me that they would support it when I talked to them. And finally, it's happening. I mean, it's happening to get out there. But we do, I believe, owe it to the citizens that aren't here today, the citizens that are in the rest of the county. You know, I'd never one time had another commissioner support me to look at East Milton. And they're just being honest with the public on how they feel. Commissioner Salter, Commissioner Lynchard, on their feelings of not supporting it is truly in the best interest of Santa Rosa County. And now that we're hearing from citizens, there's some reconsideration there, and I appreciate that. So kind of stay cognizant of that. I appreciate your support. But now, you know, last meeting, we heard from the public that they want a choice. You know, there's a group in here today saying, now not give the public a choice. As a representative of the people of Santa Rosa County, I've heard from people on the south end, people in Gulf Breeze, people that feel like they want that choice. So, you know, we're kind of torn, betwixt and between giving the citizens their choice on the ballot. I thought that's what this country is all about in doing so. So I'm willing to listen some more, but I'll continue as I always have to support East Milton for the location.
Name an address for the record, please.
Carl Hudgens, 3412 Barkwood Drive in Pace. As far as the choices go, I just don't think you need to be between the choice between the Highway 90 and the P Ridge, the Highway 90 P Ridge property and the East Milton choice. That's, when I go into Walmart, I don't just have two choices. Okay? We've got a lot of things in play here. We don't need to narrow it down to two choices when we're still investigating the best of, now we're talking about four choices. So to make a decision right now today or even this week or anytime soon that those are the two choices, when we still need to look at the Byram property, the Clary property, I think there's some things with the Pullum property that we already own that I'm not convinced that that's a dangerous location when I look at the direction of the flight paths and things like that. I don't see that piece of property in those flight paths. But I could be educated more on that, and I think we all could be more educated on that. So I think we're getting to where we needed to be about two or three weeks ago, maybe a month ago, is now we're starting to say, okay, let's seriously look at the best location for our courthouse, bearing in mind the cost of the different locations. And I spoke at one of the first one when we still had four locations on it, that I thought the Highway 90 P Ridge was the worst choice of the five locations we were talking about at that time. I still think it is because of the traffic and the cost and just the look of the thing. It looks like now we've got a new owner that we're dealing with. We were dealing with Charter Bank. We started out calling it the Colwell Banker property. We didn't even know who owned it then. That was the name of the realtor. Then I asked here, I said, well, who really owns that? I was told Charter Bank owns it. And Colwell Banker was the realtor and Charter Bank was owner. Now I'm told that an LLC that was formed in March of this year owns it. So we're going to do a deal with them. So that particular property that we seem to be so focused on so early in this, looks to me, I mean, some people could come to the conclusion that that was the intent, was we had that property picked before we even started the discussion of anything because we narrowed that search down to that two-mile radius of the Highway 90 Avalon Boulevard, and that was the only property in that search pattern, basically. JDL owned a piece that was, I think, just a little bit outside of that search pattern. So now I think we're starting, because of the citizens getting involved and asking questions, and because our commissioners are listening to those citizens like good delegates that we elected should do, now we're getting to the point where we need to be. I don't understand the diagram of the East Milton property that was put up there. I went out, rode out with Sam, and then we looked at the property appraisers' plats, and there's 113 acres where that Juvenile Justice Center is out there. And it just takes up one small corner. And I understand there's probably going to be the 87 connector go through there, but 113 acres is a pretty good-sized piece of property when you're just looking at one facility there. On the revenue stream and the tax that's been discussed, the $10 million that Greg Brown won, that's something that I wasn't aware of. I remember that being discussed a long time ago. But it looks to me like we can build a courthouse without adding a tax to the citizens if we build a reasonable courthouse. We don't build a Taj Mahal. We build it on land we already own or someone gives us free. We use, if that $10 million develops, we use that. And we take half of the revenue stream that we've been building ballparks, boat ramps, arenas. Every time I come up here, we're voting on another $20,000 for a little bitty gazebo with a few little things around it. At the time, about 20 years ago, when we dedicated that stream to recreations and parks, we needed it. we needed it, because the county was not building, had not built any recreation facilities at that time. But in 20 years, we've built multimillion dollar ballparks all around this county, and that's a good thing. But we don't need to keep building them now. They're built. My kids play, my grandkids play at these parks, and that's good. It doesn't cost as much to maintain them as it did to build them, and half of that revenue stream needs to go to building our courthouse. Then if we need a tax after that, we've given up, we've done our due diligence, we've contributed out of the county purse what we can. So, I appreciate all the efforts. I think we're getting to where we need to be.
Just one moment there, Carl. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Carl, we did at one time get a significant amount while we were building these parks and stuff into the recreation of the franchise fee, but that amount's down to $50,000 a year. If you took half of that from each one of us, there'd be hardly enough money to maintain these parks in the way they are. But say even if it was enough money, $25,000 a year, it would still only give you, you know, $125,000 a year to put into building a courthouse. So, had it been where it was before, and over the years we've taken money away from that, you know, that would be a feasible request. But I just wanted to make sure you were acknowledged of that. It'd be hard to include that as part of the payment every month.
Those numbers don't work out the way I understand them. We get 5%, we all pay 5% on our electric bill every month for a revenue stream that goes into the county. Half of that, I understand, about half goes to roads. I believe a portion goes to roads, and a portion goes to recreation.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, to have the Budget Director, please break it down.
We're getting a little far afield here.
It just needs to be clarified.
Right. But now, the correct number is $75,000 a piece a year, Carl, not 50. It's $75,000 a year a piece that each commissioner gets for recreational or any, actually, I think it's any lawful expenditure within the district.
Can I get with Ms. Bell and let's actually verify those numbers, because I think 5% of all our electric bills, even half of that breaks down to more than we're talking about here.
Well, we're talking about the money that the commissioners before.
If it's there, it's there. If it's not, then I apologize and say there's not that much money there. But we built multimillion dollar ballparks in all the districts across this, ballparks and horse arenas and everything else. I think we're over $40 million worth of those facilities now, probably. Totally. So, thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Name an address.
Debbie Gano, 2143 Chatsworth Drive, Navarre, Florida. One thing that's been going on here, one consistency that's been here, is to make sure that we are not spending money that we don't have, or that we can't acquire. And the agreement to put two choices on the ballot are linked to a sales tax increase. I strongly recommend, because people in this day and age are having a tough time surviving on what they have, and that's the consistency. We need to make sure that we're not spending any more than we have. Thus, we need to stay with property that we already own, sell off property that we don't need, that we can use that money then to put back into the courthouse. But you should absolutely separate a sales tax referendum from a property choice referendum, or you are going to completely destroy the option of having a courthouse. People need to have a separation between those items. If you put them together, they will not vote for that tax increase that's tied to that property choice. So highly recommend that you separate those two out, and that we go with what we have. That is the consistency that we've been talking, and that's why you're getting the people showing up here, is because you brought to the table a property that was going to cost us a lot of money. Us, not you, us. And you brought that property to the table, and now we're finding out that there are some things on that property that we just don't like. You know, there's a lot of hidden stuff going on with that property. So that property needs to be taken off the table completely. We need to go with property that we already own. We also need to look at the county quit being property owners, start putting property back on the tax rolls, so that we can gain taxes from property that's just sitting there right now. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. We keep talking about there's 113 acres out at the industrial park that's available for development. Years ago, when the Board of County Commissioners at that time had a plan to expand Peter Prince Airport, and swing that runway toward the northeast, a large portion of that property was acquired for that clear zone, as that runway would be extended. And a lot of that property is wetlands and environmentally sensitive land, where it drops off that backside and goes down toward the Blackwater River. But a lot of that property initially was purchased for Peter Prince Clear Zone. That's just for information.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Commissioner Soler. Yes, ma'am. Name and address.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I just wanted to say that I agree with taking the Highway 90 property off the ballot entirely. When I am out and about, I mean, in the past few months, I've talked to hundreds of people. I haven't heard one person say that they think buying more property, or putting that judicial center on Highway 90 with the way the traffic backs up already, is a good idea. So, you know, if I'm talking to hundreds of people, then there must be also thousands of people who would agree. Now maybe there are some who do want it on Highway 90. But from what I've seen, and spoken to the public, they don't want it on Highway 90. So that's just another point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we've got another comment from the floor. Would you mind, or you want, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Andrea McDermott, 8093 Sleepy Bay Boulevard, Navarre. I know that putting it on Highway 90 is going to cross a problem that Jerry touched on a little bit, is you're going to find people have to use Garson Point Bridge. And I guess that's one way to get somebody to use that bridge. The other thing is, Mr. Lynchard, you mentioned that value of property is what the people who place on it, the people selling and the people buying, and that usually the appraisal is done after the contract is decided on. But before you go into that contract, you talk to your real estate professional, and you discuss what the comps in the area are. So you do have a general idea of what the actual value is when you're placing your bid and entering into the negotiations with the person selling the property. And I know that Greg Brown has it on his website. You can go to any piece of property in this county, and it does give you an approximate value, just value, on the website. So going into the negotiations, you should know about what the property is worth. And you had mentioned that, you know, it's just what you decide it's worth, but it's not. There is actual values that you can look, and comps, you can go to Greg Brown's website, it's very informative, he now has comps on there, and you can look at it there.
Thank you. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After the conversations that we've had today, and I want to make sure I'm clear on this, I'm hearing that we don't want to buy more property to build on property we already own. I would just like clarification, because we don't already own Cotton Byram's property, we don't already own Mr. Clary's property, so I'd be willing to consider what Mr. Cooley said a while ago. But I would want to put a caveat on that, that the DeMarra property would also be one, that if he was willing to step up to the plate and give us the property, that it remain in the mix. But I, and I just want to clarify that, because if we're going to look at property we already own versus property that people are willing to donate to the county, then I don't think this should be penalized by not being an option.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole.
Jerry Cooley, 649 Arnie's Way. I don't think we're going to see 1.4 million to zero. I do appreciate you wishing for that. There's a lot of other reasons why I don't like Highway 90. And I'm going to tell you, and I've tried to be as fair and down the line as I can on this, every conversation that we have, if you say Highway 90, Avalon, East Milton, or Milton, Highway 90 is the worst choice. That's the one people get the most upset about. I don't want it there, I don't want to buy a property, we think it's a problem, over and over and over. I'm telling you, I, you know, you guys know how much I move around, all right? That is, over and over and over, Highway 90 is the worst choice of anything that's out there. And I want to say again, I understand what you voted for in the past, but I think you need to reconsider and take Highway 90 location out of the agenda, and focus on the Milton site, East Milton site. And if Cotton Byram, and I'm quite certain that that offer is still there for Cotton Byram, I will tell you this from a personal standpoint, and it's mainly because of what happened to us on the Pullum purchase. Mr. Clary's been a partner with Mr. Pullum for many years. For that reason alone, I have no interest in having any dealings with Mr. Clary. That's just my humble opinion in it, whether it's free or not. I just, it was too many entanglements there. We have property in East Milton, certainly several folks have brought forward leaving it in the city of Milton today, which I think needs to be considered. But I'm, again, absolutely opposed, and it is my belief that two of you need to get together and make a motion today, and let's end this discussion on Highway 90. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'd like to make a couple of comments of my own. I was really caught off guard when I saw that the name that we've been discussing changed. I was very disappointed when I heard one of my colleagues this morning admit that he's had personal conversations with this person outside this boardroom. That's very upsetting to me. It may be legal, but it doesn't pass the rule that I was raised with, which is that you avoid even the appearance of an impropriety. All along, you know, I just, I don't like surprises. It's not the first time you guys have heard me say that. I don't like surprises, and I really don't like this surprise, and I'm going to withdraw. Of course, I voted against it to start with, but this just doubled down my opposition to this piece of property. I cannot, will not support it. Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, since those remarks were pointed straight at me, I clarified it with the county attorney prior to meeting with this gentleman. My simple comment to him was that simply that if you don't give us this piece of property as a gift, as has been offered by other people, Cotton Byram mainly, on this piece of property, I do not, and I agree, I do not see our sales tax passing. That were my exact copies, entire conference to him. And again, I did clarify that with the county attorney. I'm not trying to do anything behind the back of anybody on this board or this county. I'm just trying to simply get us a judicial center built, as I've tried to do for the last eight, nine years, so.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Cole. Am I the only guy on this board that was surprised by this? Did everybody else know about Milton Crossings LLC but me? I mean, when did you become aware of it?
I only became aware of it when I started trying to talk to the representative from the bank, Mike McGrogan, I believe. And that was probably about two weeks ago when I, if Mike passed that on to me.
Here again, I highly object to one individual member of this board trying to negotiate a business deal on behalf of the board. It's highly inappropriate.
It's not on behalf of the board.
Highly, highly inappropriate.
It's not on behalf of the board. It's simply for somebody, I made a comment to a gentleman and told him that if you don't donate this property to the county, I don't believe our sales tax is going to pass. And that's truly how I feel, so.
Mr. Cooley.
Jerry Cooley, 649 Arnie's Way. I believe I hear one commissioner has withdrawn his support for the Highway 90, so let's...
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir. I have not withdrawn my support for Highway 90, I've never supported Highway 90.
I understand, as far as it being on, a consideration. So you got one that's against it. Is there another one up here that wants to take that step today, and let's end this discussion?
No, sir. Now, we'll conduct the vote ourselves, but I appreciate the sentiment, but you're a little bit out of bounds on that one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
A few minutes ago, we talked about asking staff to revisit the Cotton Byram property and possibly the Clary property, bring it back in two weeks. So that's going to be my recommendation. Let's let them do their job, bring it back in two weeks, and hopefully we can make a decision.
Would you restate that, please, and make it in form of a motion?
We just moved to Thursday's agenda to direct staff to continue to evaluate potential sites in East Milton, including the Cotton Byram property and the Clary proposal, and then bring it back to us in two weeks with their findings.
And if you would entertain an amendment to that motion, just so that we tighten it down, and that include examining whether or not we could move the gun range, as we've discussed, and labeling the utilities. Would you accept that as an amendment?
Well, here again, just continue to evaluate these Milton sites. Now here again, I'm not supporting eliminating the Highway 90 site, I'm just saying, continue to look at those East Milton sites.
Make that in form, yes, Commissioner.
I think we've already moved that, we've already approved that.
I'm reinforcing it.
That doesn't answer the question at hand, which is approval of the, again, the contract on the Highway 90 property. Now, two weeks ago, we decided to give the people a choice, and everybody was happy. Now, they want to take that choice away. I've spoken with a lot of citizens, especially in the south end of the county, who are more in favor of a Highway 90 location than an East Milton location. What is wrong with putting that question out there and letting the people decide? I don't grasp that. If, you know, we're giving the people a choice, let them decide. Do you want it in the P Ridge area, or do you want it in East Milton?
Well, my problem is, as I vocalized this morning, I'll repeat myself again, I don't like surprises. I don't like the fact that one of the members of this board has been in private negotiations with the bank, and then with this subsequent buyer that appears to have imposed himself between the discussions of the bank and ourselves, and it really, I feel very adamant about it. You guys can outvote me, but I absolutely do not support it.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Our job as community leaders, not sit on the porch while they're waiting for something to happen. I clarified it with the county attorney that I could make that phone call. I worked in the best interest and have in the last 12 years of Santa Rosa County. I'll continue to do so. I'm sorry I didn't get your authority to do that before I did so. Unfortunately, there's sunshine law, we can't discuss things until we're sitting at this dais.
As we should not do, and we should not engage and engage.
Excuse me, sir, you give me the podium?
I did, and you, I apologize, I apologize, it's your floor.
Thank you, sir. I worked at the best interest of Santa Rosa County. It wasn't a secret meeting, it wasn't a behind closed doors meeting. The man simply drove to my automotive shop. I asked him what he thought about donating that property. I expressed to him that the citizens of Santa Rosa County have acknowledged that they will not support a sales tax unless we do not buy property. I said, if you want to see this project built, you need to recognize the value of a $25 to $35 million investment that the citizens of Santa Rosa County would make, that would affect, strongly affect the balance of your piece of property. And if you can't feel like in your heart that now that you've made a purchase of this property, and now that it's out of the hands of this bank, that you can donate that property as other citizens in Santa Rosa County have offered to do, then I don't think it's going to fly. And that was my comments, and I'm sorry you see it as inappropriate, but I work for the citizens of Santa Rosa County. I seen it as appropriate to ask them to do that.
Well, I appreciate your comments. Well, I appreciate your comments, and we are supposed to be leaders in the community, and we are supposed to be forward looking. And we're supposed to be looking forward for the next generation and not for the next 12 months. It just, how long, you said you had that conversation two weeks ago, so you've known about Milton Crossings LLC for two weeks. I've heard nothing about it. Am I the only one on the board that has caught flat footed by this?
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't aware of it either. However, to kind of move us forward, I agree with Commissioner Lynchard that I have a lot of people who tell me they like the P Ridge site, people in the south end, people in the Pace area. So here again, one of the last decisions we made was put it on the ballot, let the people choose, and I think that's what we should do. That's a fair way to do it.
Yes, sir. And I want to see the appraisal on it. I know I'm thinking it's backwards to the rest of the board on this, but I'll say what it's worth for. We're making $1.4 million offer. It may be worth half a million dollars. I don't know what it's worth, and we don't know what it's worth until we look. But let's move the issue because we've got a whole agenda to deal with here.
And I'm going to take a break with or without you in a few minutes, too. So I support what Commissioner Lynchard said. Commissioner Lynchard, is that a motion to move it to Thursday's agenda?
Without objection.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, please?
No, we're not through with this. Just stand by. All right. So the motion was to move item number three to purchase the, for the real property purchase agreement with Milton Crossings LLC, approximately 22 acre parcel on US 90 for the proposed judicial facility. And you moved that without objection, and I object. Let's have a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, question before we...
Question. It's been called, Commissioner Cole. The question's been called. Go ahead, Commissioner Cole.
Okay. If we move this today, and I'm just asking perhaps our attorney, since she has more experience in land documents and stuff, we move forward with this agreement, I know you've written in there where we're not obligated if the tax, several things, several caveats that if it fails, we're not obligated. In fact, we would even get our deposit back. Is that correct? Okay. At that point, if we have the property appraised, as Commissioner Melvin suggested, and I think it's a good idea, you know, you have an appraisal done. We have the property appraised, and the asking price is 1.4, and it appraises it 800, 600, whatever it appraises at. At that point, can we go back and say, well, sir, we got this contract, however, we're only willing to offer you a appraised value of 800,000? Are we in any way obligated to the $10,000 or anything else in this contract to decline it at that point if they don't take our counter offer?
No, sir.
Okay. So at that point...
You may withdraw from the contract for any reason up until November the 21st.
All right. So I would agree that if we initiate and pass this today, that, you know, we do, and I think it's part of this contract, that we'll do our due diligence, which I would think would be part of that doing an appraisal. All right. Clarify that for me. Thank you.
The question's for the board, but you have a right to speak before we vote, but I'd ask you to keep your comments on point and brief, please, ma'am.
Yvonne Harper, 7375 Olympia Street. I just had a couple of questions for clarification purposes only. Mr. Cole, when you said you stated, when you spoke with Mr. Clary, you had said to him that the only way we would look at the property as a county is if he donated it. Is that the succinct version?
Right.
Okay. Was that offer extended to others involved, you know, others who have property as well? Or was that just, I know that there was another gentleman who had offered property. I just wasn't sure.
I wouldn't see how in all good conscience that once we make this known today at this meeting, that we're going to consider property that's willing to be offered at no charge, how in good conscience this board or the citizens would expect us not to take an offer from another person. So I...
It wasn't, my question didn't have to do with whether or not we took the offer. It was that within that conversation you had with him, you said that you told him you would only, we would only, as a county, take the property if he donated it to save money. Could that offer then be applied to the property on 90, where we ask them the same?
Well, that's what I asked a while ago. That was my suggestion a while ago, that we could enter this, and the county attorney could say, look, Milton Holding LLC, we've got two other pieces of property on the board. We've got our own property on the board. Even after an appraisal of seeing that the property is worth this, we're not interested unless you're willing to donate. That's, I don't see where we've taken that option off the table either.
Okay.
And then with regards to it being on the ballot, will the information for both properties, whether it's in East Milton or 90, as far as the cost, building cost, all, you know, land, the entire cost be on the ballot as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We got a motion for the board, and it requires a vote.
A second?
Yes, ma'am.
A second?
A second, Commissioner Lynchard's motion.
We got a motion and a second by Commissioner Salter. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign.
Great.
Item moves forward to Thursday. Let's take a 10-minute break.
Please find your seats. We'll wait just a moment for Commissioner Cole, I mean Commissioner Lynch. All right. Administrative item number four is discussion of establishing solid waste franchise area or areas north of East River in Santa Rosa County. Mr. Walker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the matter that we had discussed a couple of meetings ago. We'd kind of going through the process. We've had the three public hearings where we're looking at the establishment of the areas. One of the things Commissioner Lynch had mentioned to me, and he's not here, would be the possibility or the practicality of one having just bidden for one franchise in the northern part of the county. The benefit of that would be the, it would, to cover the entire northern part of the county, it would, you'd not have to split the cost of going to the Alabama line between two vendors. You'd have the opportunity to have a little better cost. You also could probably grandfather somehow the J and L concerns that had been raised. And those were really the only concerns when we went through the public hearing process or the town hall meeting process were the 300 and some odd customers, I guess, of J and L.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter.
One of the things that I've been hearing, obviously, we're talking about the central part of the county where we have good population, and then we're talking about the far rural parts of the county where you have very little population, and that's the way people want it, and that's why they choose to live up there. For example, the Blackwater River State Forest, there are only probably maybe 50 people who live within the forest. Well, that's an awful lot of mileage for a hauler to have to cover and keep the fees as low as possible. One of the conversations I've had, legally, by the way, is look at that one hauler concept with some type of potential, and I'll defer to county attorney at some point in time, for that one hauler to have the ability to maybe subcontract some of those far rural areas as long as they meet the guidelines and keep the price reasonable. For example, there's a hauler out of Baker who covers the Blackwater River State Forest mostly now, and they make that work. So I hate to see losing that option and not being able to have a franchise area within the central, mostly northern part of the county. So that would be something I'd want us to look at, too, is the ability to possibly subcontract certain rural areas where you have something that's working now.
That's, thank you, Commissioner Salter. And that certainly work, and my suggestion runs a lot, very much along those lines, and that would be to do it by weight so that the little mom and pop operator, J and L, is not impacted with their 16,000 pound truck. And the kids that haul for the neighborhood, you know, that take yard debris and stuff, working their way through school in summer, whatever, those folks aren't impacted. The whole thrust of this is to take, to minimize the damage to our infrastructure by the multiple haulers in our subdivisions. So we ought to be able to accomplish that without damaging the small business aspect. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Chairman. Rory Cassidy, 2910 North Palafox Street, Republic Services/Allied Waste. I think the second item that y'all had discussed previously was also the cost savings, like they realized in South Santa Rosa County. Now, obviously, South Santa Rosa County is almost all neighborhoods, and again, it's not mandatory, but you only have one provider in there. So you might want to look at the other options to protect the small haulers. That do a fantastic job providing in the most rural areas. But the services that are available, the bulk collection, the yard waste collection, recycling, is something that is becoming more and more popular. I know the contracts they entered in almost three years ago were coming up for renewal in the fourth quarter of this year. I will tell you to look at your best rate, and if you recall, I had just come to work for Republic Services when y'all contracted with Waste Pro and Waste Management, but the Republic Services rate was substantially lower than both of those. We did not have an office in Santa Rosa County, but we operate probably the longest of any in Santa Rosa County. So as you're looking at the options for the north and central, you might want to consider the South Santa Rosa franchised areas also. Again, Gulf Breeze just went out for proposals, and the rates were eight, almost eight percent lower than what we were charging last year. Due to our level of service, we retained the city of Gulf Breeze, but I think if y'all talk to Mr. Eddie over there, he'll tell you, we try to do a phenomenal job for the citizens of Santa Rosa County. But there are several options out there. I would leave, when you issue the RFP, leave the options open. You know, density, as a business person, density is where the savings is. You know, the services that are provided, maybe have the provider make those available in an open market, but have those services available, being the bulk collection and the yard waste. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for being a little tardy returning. So I missed the first part of the discussion. One thing I had brought up to Mr. Walker a couple of weeks ago was a single franchised area for the north end of the county. I think, again, given the population density up here, the fact that we're a lot more spread out in the north end of the county than in the south end, it may make more sense to have one hauler serving the entire north end of the county. One reason we bifurcated the south end of the county was so that we would have two haulers. In case something happened to one hauler, we weren't happy with the hauler, we could transfer that service to the other provider. That won't be an issue. We already have two haulers operating in the south end. If we add one hauler to the north end, and it could be one of the existing, or it could be another provider, then we will still, at a minimum, have two haulers operating in the county. So if there's a hiccup with one hauler, then there'll be somebody to step in and fill that void. But by, again, because of the low population density in a lot of areas up here, if we had one hauler servicing the entire north end of the county, that would probably lead to lower rates. Just a thought. That wasn't on our list when we're looking at how to split the county up.
That makes sense to me. Commissioner Cole, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
Since I'm not in that business, and I don't think any of us are, can I get Mr. Cassidy back up again? And I know that it's all in quantity, in how many people you're servicing at one time. I believe it was Commissioner Salter that suggested possibly subcontracting with some smaller companies. I'd just like to hear your input, because it does get very rural, or it does get to where you're having to, you know, cover a lot of ground. Do you see that as a representative of a company that does this as being a feasible idea?
Well, Commissioner, we do. We offer homeowners associations a lot lower rate than somebody that's in a rural area. And we do have some homeowners associations that by their bylaws, they can't dictate that they have to use Republic Services, but we service the majority of the houses in those subdivisions, and so they get a lower rate than somebody that lives up near Munson Highway would get. You know, to get your best rate, and you know, I went to one public hearing that y'all were there, there were three people there, or four people there, and all of them spoke against having a franchise area because they wanted to use their current provider. You know, in an ideal situation, I would take a map and draw it from pace around Milton, East Milton, and say, here's your franchise area. Those people are going to get the most attractive rate. If you go everything, you know, north county, the people in Pace and Milton are going to have to subsidize the people that are in the most rural areas, just because of the truck time, which is measured, you know, per, cost per hour to maintain. So your dense areas are going to have a lower rate than if the whole county is included, the whole north and central county is included. But we would respond either way. If it was, you know, one of the maps identified a dense area, and we'll just call it the Pace-Milton area, you know, what's the rate there, and what's the rate for the entire county? And maybe when you request for proposals, have the options outlined, and then you can say, okay, well, these people are going to pay, you know, $18 a month if it's just this area, and $22 a month if it's the entire area, and decide, okay, do these people, are you going to have enough participation to justify a higher rate? The people that live in the neighborhoods, they don't want to burn in their backyard. They're going to use the services. It's the people, again, that are in the rural areas that, you know, don't need the necessary services that, you know, a city dweller would require.
So I like the idea of doing the entire north end, but I think I heard you say is that if you were to give the entire north end the same price per person, whether you're in a rural or in a congested area, basically, we would have the people in a congested area or more denser populated areas subsidizing the other costs?
Well, subsidizing might not be the correct word for that. They would be paying a higher rate. They would be paying a higher rate, because when you're using your business model, you're basing it on the number of homes per hour that you can collect. So if you're collecting 100 homes an hour, like you are in South Santa Rosa County, the rate's going to be a lot lower than if you're collecting 50 homes an hour, because your truck costs are the same per hour.
So I'd really have to see that, sure, I could agree with it, because I, you know, part of what we did besides the, you know, less mileage in our neighborhoods is we actually were able to give our citizens a better rate and better service than they were paying. So that'd be my concern, I guess.
Sure. Okay. Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One possibility, and again, all of this can be fleshed out when we put out the request for proposal, as Mr. Cassidy said. If you look at option three, you know, it divides the north end of the county between, is that, is that four? Highway four, where the dividing line is?
I can't tell either.
I believe it is, Commissioner. I believe you used highway four as the northern boundary.
I think highway four was the northern boundary. We can try to determine whether or not that's really the appropriate line of demarcation for rural versus the more congested areas in Milton and Pace. We may want to move that south a bit. But we could still have one hauler service the entire north end of the county. They could just provide two rates. They could have a rate for, you know, the 90 corridor, if you will, and then a rate for the more rural areas, or, you know, a surcharge, which may end up giving the rural customers a better price than they're paying now, certainly a higher level of service.
Higher service, is you're right.
And, you know, they would still pay more than our city dwellers down along the highway 90 corridor, but they could still benefit in the long run, even though they're in the more rural areas.
Right. Okay. Well, we'll package this up and move it to Thursday. A lot of good things to consider, and as long as we take care of the mom and pop hauler and the college kid that's working in the neighborhood.
Just if I could, and I'm not the attorney, I'm the garbage man, but on subcontracting, Commissioner, it's somewhat, and I know you have a lot of history with Gulf Power that uses subcontract, I think you would be better off grandfathering them in and saying, give us the list of customers that you currently service. Republic Services is not going to service them unless they choose to go with. We would, the issue with subcontracting, we're drug free, we do background checks. We do subcontracting with our truck maintenance, like body, painting, transport, and what have you. But the subcontracting, I think, if you grandfather them, and there are some contracts out there in Florida that have grandfather clauses in there, I think it's cleaner than if we're trying to hire and pay them. It's just my thoughts personally.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cole?
And we're all getting a lot of emails from people, especially J and L customers and some other independents, and I'd like to see us at least clarify that today. And I agree that the grandfathering would be better if, I think that'd be the best resolution. If you have the customers today, you keep the customers. You just notify our staff so that can be included in the RFP of which ones are not available in that.
Mr. Chairman, I think we may not have formally approved it at the last meeting, but certainly our intent was made clear that regardless of what we do, there will be some provision made for J and L, who I believe is the only small independent hauler. Are there two? Okay. For any of our small independent haulers, there will be provision made to grandfather them in. So they will be able to continue serving their customers. Now, if their customers decide they want to take advantage of the new program, they're free to do so. But we will not, we're not going to put those small haulers out of business.
So who would be the two? I mean, we've got five haulers that are licensed, that are permitted in Santa Rosa?
There's one independent and four, I mean, there's five licensed, according to the list the staff gave me.
Right.
J and L is the only independent, and the others are Waste Management, Waste Pro.
And I thought that Adams Sanitation had some customers in Santa Rosa County.
They did. That's the company that serves some of the people out of Blackwater River Forest.
Oh, 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 okay.
They're out of Baker, right?
We'll check. I mean, yeah, Commissioner Melvin's right. He and I were going by the same numbers. There was only the one.
Yeah. Well, my numbers came from the staff, so whatever we have a license on. All right. Well, let's move this to Thursday then, without objection. And here, none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, for clarity, as you look at option number three, that's highway 182 is the line of demarcation between the red and the blue, and that goes all the way to the state line.
Okay. All right. And just to clarify, I think when we moved it to Thursday, we didn't specify a map. So. I would be, I think we need at least two options when we go out there. So option three would be one where we, and actually, you can...
Option three is highway four, I believe.
Option three is 182, but you can interpret option three in a couple of different ways. You can have one hauler serve that entire area with two different rates, or you can split it up and put it out for bid, and let one hauler bid on the south area, and let them put in a completely separate bid for the north area. Again, it's going to come down to dollars and cents for our residents up in the north end of the county. And if somebody's just serving that rural area and not taking care of the more populated, more densely populated area, rates are going to be out of whack. So option three can be broken down into two ways. And then if the board wants to discuss or include option one or option two, just for the sake of having more than one hauler. But I, personally, I don't think we gain anything by option two, option one or option two.
Mr. Chairman?
Be option three or?
Commissioner Salter.
As we move forward, we're trying to create another map to accomplish what Commissioner Lynch is talking about, to look at it anyway. You've got to be cognizant of that north-south line, too, that goes along that Ocalusa County line, because if someone gets the franchise up in that area, even though an independent hauler is hauling primarily for most of those customers, if it's in the franchise area, all it's going to take is one customer who lives on the backside of the forest to request service. And based on the franchise, now you've got to drive 25 miles to get one customer. So we just need to be aware of that as we try to look at this new map.
I mean, the alternative there is to have an option where we carve out the rural area of the county, and we don't have franchised hauling in that area.
Well, those are some of the comments I've heard, and I just think we've got to be real careful when we create a new map. Careful, just make sure it reflects what we're trying to accomplish.
I think that, you know, we all know what the goal is. It has to get a better level of service and the best possible rates for our residents. It's a little more difficult dealing with the north end of the county than it was the south end, just because of the population density and how varied it is. So option three, I would say we move option three as it stands to Thursday, along with an option three that provides for one hauler serving the entire north end of the county. And we can ask them to provide us a rate tier, rates for...
And we might as well go ahead and include the carve out now for J and L, and I'll add that as an amendment if you're making a motion.
It's hard to carve them out because they're...
Well, if we grant them an exception, when I said carve out, that was the wrong word. Yeah, we just...
You just mean the exclusion as far as grandfathering and the way.
Right. This grandfather was the right term. I used the wrong term.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioner Cole?
As we go about addressing J and L, I'd like for county staff to also contact Adams and Baker and just see what the customer number looks like up in that rural part of the county.
Okay, then, the motion is that we move this item to Thursday without objection, and it contains option three with instructions to the staff to contact Adams for input, and that we will grandfather J and L. Is that everything we needed to include? I move that without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number five is discussion of three amendments to the human resource policies as recommended by Human Resource Director. Mr. Walker?
Commissioner Newpackett is the email, excuse me, is the memo from Mr. Cook outlining those three particular policy changes, and that he would recommend. First, would allow departments to fill with an intern or a student or currently filling the position with a temporary status. You know, we use temporary people in the past. This is a way to just help get them moved into the county workforce as it works out, and it's, it seems to be pretty cost effective. Same thing is with the, it recognizes the co-op students as trainee appointments, again, for the transition. And then you see the holiday, the pay situation for people on workers' compensation.
I have a question or concern, and maybe you can help allay it, but by doing this, would it not have the effect of just jumping the civil service role?
Devan, you want to speak to that? I mean, I'm not...
I mean, the way I see it, if you get somebody in here on a temporary basis, and I've been sitting on a civil service role for a year, trying to get a job with the county, and a kid comes in and gets a temporary job, and now you have the right to place him without consulting the civil service board or referring to the list, seems unfair to me.
In essence, you are, in some regard, changing that opportunity for a list. But what we're finding is that we're creating lists with hundreds of people on it when only one person, you know, the elected official or the department has already seen who can perform the job and is qualified. And, you know, this is not something we would do every day, but we like that opportunity. A lot of jobs, we don't have anybody available. We just have a job opening. But there are those occasions when we have somebody that's those occasions when we have somebody that's already trained, already working in that position, and this would give the opportunity. Now, they still have to meet all the minimum qualifications, go through everything to take that job. It is, is there a possibility that somebody could have used that as, in all of our policies, yes, they could, but we have not seen that. We feel comfortable in making the change and allowing the departments to be able to fill that without, uh, the need to, to take applications and go through that process, because what we're finding is they wind up selecting the person that's already trained, that's eligible anyway.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, uh, I'll move this to, uh, Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number six is discussion of the use of Williams Lake Road for a ten K, uh, ten K run benefit for the preservation of the historical Coon Hill Cemetery. I move with approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number seven is discussion of purchasing the Cisco Blade server system with required operating software from Presidio Network Solutions Incorporated in the amount of forty thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents, based on comparison shopping, uh, backups in the, in the back of the book, I guess. What, what does this accomplish for us, again, Mr. Walker, why are we...
Yeah, it's noted, it's noted on the, um, memorandum from, from Ms. Floyd, is that this would, would, uh, replace the current, I think, is, is some number of servers that we currently have. This also would provide us, uh, redundancy, uh, and, and it backs up our system. We have, we, we have the same system at the emergency, at the administrative center and at the, um, uh, emergency management building, and, and this, this just kind of completes that.
Okay.
Redundancy.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any discussion from the commissioners? I move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number eight, uh, public hearing scheduled for nine-thirty a.m. Thursday, March twenty-seventh, there's none. Uh, we have an add-on by the county administrator, uh, Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and this will just be the acceptance of the, uh, assignment from the Gulf Power for, actually, it's, I said the last phase, they had been waiting for the last phase to become complete, so we will actually, uh, accept the lighting contracts for all, all three of the phases of the, the US ninety-eight lighting, uh, and then we will ultimately get, uh, there will be a, a master agreement with, uh, FDOT to reimburse us for the number of fixtures.
So, it'll just be a pass-through?
No. Pretty much, I mean, it, it, it has been, um, you know, to this point, they've been very, very generous with that.
Any comments from the board? Uh, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Uh, here, none, it passes. What names specifically do we need to stick on this, Mr. Walker?
It, it'll just be the assignment of the, uh, acceptance of the Gulf Power.
Okay.
Uh, lighting service contracts. And this is, I mean, we've done this any number of times for the last number of years, this is obviously just the largest, uh, by far of any of these, these contracts that we've ever received, is, if it's the project.
Engineers' report, uh, Mr. Blalock.
Yes, we only have one item today, and we recommend approval of the construction plans for Boracay Cove subdivision. This is a sixty-seven lot subdivision located in Working District One, just off of highway ninety. Uh, you've seen it, you approved the preliminary plat last week.
Comments from the board? I recommend, uh, we move this Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes. Public Services Committee, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of approval of the home substantial rehabilitation program, second mortgage subordination request for the property located at forty-three eighty-one Pine Villa Circle in Pace. I move this to Thursday without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item two, discussion of approval of the HHRP second mortgage subordination request for the property located at forty-one forty-nine Highland Boulevard in Pace. I move this to Thursday without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item three, discussion of approval of the HHRP modification of existing mortgage for the property located at sixty-nine eighty-five Martin Road in Milton, and I move this to Thursday without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item four, discussion of authorizing the chairman to sign the enclosed resolutions and related documents to apply for transportation alternative program grant applications for projects within Santa Rosa County. I move this to Thursday without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
And that concludes Public Services.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. Uh, we have nothing on the, uh, Public Works Committee, which brings us to Budget and Finance Committee, Commissioner Cole, please, sir.
Thank you. Item number one is discussion of bids received for one Steel Deck Trust, Steel Deck Truck Scale for the landfill. Low bidder meeting specifications is Machelli Scales with a bid of forty-one thousand fourteen dollars, which includes a two-inch remote detector. I do so without objection.
Uh, here, none, it passes to Thursday.
Okay. Item number two, discussion of proposals received for the south tire and building grounding system. The low pro, proposal meeting specification was submitted by Pinnacle Wireless in the amount of twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and fourteen cents. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one hundred, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to be carried forward funds from the three, tree mitigation revenues in the general fund to be used for the purpose of purchasing, planning, and maintaining trees on public property. I move that to Thursday without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item four, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash zero one zero, in the amount of six thousand six hundred and four dollars to transfer funds from the capital fund to the general fund to purchase an ATV for Navar Beach. Move that without objection to Thursday.
Here, none, it passes.
Item five, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one zero two, in the amount of three hundred and thir, three hundred and three thousand five hundred and forty dollars to recognize the Tourist Development Council commitments for construction of Baghdad Mill Site, including a hundred and sixty-two thousand from North End TDC reserves, and one hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and forty dollars from general TDC reserves, and authorize expenditures in the District Two project funds. If so, move that to Thursday without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item six, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one zero three, in the amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars to recognize the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen recreational trials program, rent and match from the TDC North End Committee Reserves, and authorizes for expenditure of trail construction and purchase of trailside facilities for the, within the Baghdad Mill Site Park in the District Two project fund. Do so without objection to Thursday.
Here, none, it passes.
Item seven is discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one zero four, in the amount of fifty, five thousand six hundred dollars to recognize donations from the Baghdad Waterfront Partnership Incorporated and the Blackwater Pirates Organization, and authorize for expenditure for improvements to the Baghdad Mill Site Park in District Two project funds. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
And item eight, discussion of county expenditures and check register, which I'll have prepared for Thursday, and I do so without objection.
Move that to Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes.
Includes this report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Public Forum, anybody have anything to bring before the board? Name an address for the record, please, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen. Robert Coley, eighty-two seventy-one Gulf Boulevard, Navar, Florida. Uh, as I'll have you know, um, the thirteen years of litigation between the, uh, leaseholders on the beach and, uh, property appraiser Brown, uh, has concluded, the Supreme Court has spoken, um, we accept that, that's not happy about it, but that's, that's the way it is, and we certainly, it's had time to move on. Uh, in previous meetings, uh, several years ago, and I don't remember who the commissioners were that were, made the statements, but they were mentioning that, uh, if the county won the lawsuit and beach people were required to pay taxes, that the, um, lease fees should go away, because it's not, this whole thing that was based on the, uh, Greg Brown's fairness, his, his suit was based on fairness, and it's only fair, I think, that now that, uh, we are obligated to pay taxes, that we shouldn't have to pay lease fees also.
I made the, uh, I made the commitment as I was running for this office, uh, in two thousand and ten, that I thought that would be an equitable way, and I haven't changed my mind, so I will, I will bring that before this board, uh, if, to the extent that it's legal and allowable, uh, if it's something this board can accomplish, then, uh, I intend to introduce that as, as something we take up in the next set of meetings.
We appreciate that, Commissioner Melvin. Um, the other thing is there's going to be about three-point-six million, I think, in, uh, interest fees on people who have not paid their taxes over the last twelve years. I think a big chunk of that is probably going to be the holiday end property, maybe some other undeveloped property, but that three-point-six million, uh, it would be great if we could use that for beach restoration, this money that's coming from the beach. Um, we're looking for funds to do the beach restoration, that certainly would be a good source, uh, to provide a, a good chunk of that money, so, um, I'm the only one up here today from the beach, but I'm sure that by Thursday or next week, or next meeting, there'll be other people up here speaking about this. I'm not speaking and representing the leaseholders, because my wife is president of leaseholders, I'm not. I'm here speaking as a private citizen of Navar Beach. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Anything else to come before the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter.
I'm glad you said that, because earlier, a gentleman said that we're going to have ten million new dollars coming into the coffer, and that's not correct, because that's a total amount with, with largest share going to the school board, so I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, I think the number for the interest is something around three-point-six million dollars.
And those are issues for the attorney to guide us through. I'm not sure what we can and can't waive, what we can do with penalties and interest, that's going to be a difficult question. Yes, sir, please, uh, name an address.
Uh, good morning, commissioners, and I, I know that you are ready to get rolling. Don Richards, eleven twenty-nine Park Lane, Gulf Breeze. Uh, two items to bring forth. One is, uh, about a month or so ago, Commissioner Lynch introduced a resolution to help, uh, United Peninsula Association fund the maintenance of the median. Just wanted you to know that I have received communications from the IRS that they have changed, had a change of heart, and that we will be receiving a five-oh-one C designation within thirty days. So, that is a huge accomplishment for United Peninsula. Uh, we'll know then whether it's a C-three or C-four, they were evaluating both of, but they said that we would hear from us within thirty days. Uh, the second item that I wanted to bring up was, uh, in terms of funding, we have also received a donation, the first committed donation of fifteen hundred dollars from United, uh, excuse me, to United Peninsula from Penn Air Federal Credit Union, and we will be receiving that before months in, so that's really got things going, uh, in the right direction.
Thank you very much for your comments, and congratulations on making it through the IRS maze.
Three years.
Yeah, well, anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.